Okay, good evening and welcome to the September 6th meeting of the 2017 meeting of the Department of Public Planning Commission. The first item on the meeting tonight is to approve the minutes of July 19th, 2017, and August 2nd, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have eight public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is a zoning application for approximately 31.3 acres located along Medical Center Parkway to be zoned PSO, which is Plan Sinage Overlay. How Stone Properties is applicant. Ms. Kerr, how are you?
I'm doing very well.
Good, it's good to see you.
Thank you. Well, let's talk about some signs. In 2006, the planning department amended the zoning ordinance to allow planned sign overlays, otherwise known as PSOs, to accommodate developments with 20 or more acres to be allowed increased signage above what is allowed in the city's sign ordinance. Signage allocation for large developments are more complex than what is typical, and there are certain elements that are not allowed or that may not be addressed in the city's sign ordinance, which may be approved by a PSO. Since that zoning amendment, we've had four PSOs in Murfreesboro. It's the avenues, Stones River Mall, Amazon, and St. Thomas Rutherford. With the PSO, applicants waive their rights to any variances or appeals to signage to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and any revisions or updates to the planned sign overlay that are not deemed to be minor adjustments must be approved by the Planning Commission and City Council. The PSO becomes that development's sign ordinance and is regulated by the development and the city staffs. The Fountains of Gateway is located at 1500 Medical Center Parkway. It is zoned MU with a GDO III overlay. The development consists of a total of approximately 32 acres, 12 of which has been purchased by the Fountains, and approximately 20 which are under options by the Fountains. This development consists of office space, retail, and restaurants, an outdoor entertainment area including an ice and lawn, or lawn and ice rink depending on which season it is, and a performance stage, and a portable theater screen, and potentially a hotel. Due to the diversity of uses and the building types within the development, it was determined that a PSO was desired for optimal and innovative signage and lighting. Because this property lies within the GDO III zone, it was also reviewed by the Design Review Committee that oversees elements within developments in that area and was approved on June 28th, 2017. There are a few differences between the PSO and the city's sign ordinance which have been outlined, included in your agenda package, and I'd like to point out that there is a typo in one of it under the development signage and temporary project signs. The size would not be 48 square foot, they would be 32 square foot, and that is the size of all project signs in the city of Murfreesboro. The Planning Commission needs to conduct a public hearing, after which it will need to formulate a recommendation for City Council. At this time Tyler Thayer, who are representing the Hearthstone Group, will review the PSO elements which are above what would be allowed by the city's sign ordinance. Here I will be available to answer any questions either before or after the public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Thayer. I'm representing Hearthstone Properties and the Fountains of Gateway. And I'm here to answer questions and then quickly hopefully go through the primary, I'm not going to go through every single page here, but just primarily the pages that are different from the current city ordinance so to hopefully, and then Amelia if I miss anything will be sure to correct me. I'm going to skip over real quick, if I can get this going, to page 14 in your books that we have provided you. Oh, is it on there?
Yeah, pull up the monitors.
Ah, awesome. That's great. Pulling up the monitor, I don't need to remind you. It's fantastic, okay. So page 14 is the master site signage locations, and what we tried to do on this page is really to outline the different areas where we are going to kind of put some of these signage that would be above and beyond the typical signage overlay or the typical city ordinance. What we're looking to do on the Fountains is really to create a holistic signage program. In many ways, we have limited it according to, and some ways we have kind of expanded it a little bit. To fit within the building designs, to fit within the retail that is underneath at every single, like we have retail on the bottom floor and offices up above, and eventually residential up above, and we wanted to think about how these retailers would display these signage and how it would not detract from what's going on above and kind of create these guidelines. In addition, we have special lighting designs that have been deemed to be kind of more oriented towards signage because of their nature, and so we have outlined those as well. So this master plan kind of outlines all of those elements for you. If we go to page 15, we'll start at the front entry of the Fountains of Gateway. This is the Fountains of Gateway main entry sign. We have two of these that would flank the primary boulevard as you enter in. This is larger than the typical, the square footage I think is 193 square feet total, which is a little bit larger than what is typically done. It includes a waterfall that are falling behind the Fountains of Gateway, and in addition, if you see the blue dotted line at the top of that, that would represent a linear strip light that is RGB controlled, and I'll get a little bit more into the entire campus plan for these RGB lights. These are the lights that can be any color, you can program it, so during February we could do heart awareness month, during October, pink for breast cancer awareness month, blue for the Raiders, whatever. And so we plan, we have limitations in what we can do, we can't just go like a disco, and I'll get into that here in a second. Any questions on that, or should you just want me to go through real quick?
Like the blue.
Excuse me?
I like the blue.
You like the blue? I think we do too. We like the whole campus being blue, to be honest. So, page 18, this represents a complex ID sign. Also, you might consider this to be called a monument sign. The purpose of this sign is to welcome people to the Fountains of Gateway. In addition to, we have a limited signage ability for some of our larger retail tenants and retail tenants and maybe the hotel which is more interior to the lot. We have requested on this PSO three possible locations that we would do this. I'm not saying we might, we may do all three depending on how the demands are, but at least one and probably two, particularly the ones at the northern, or the kind of, well, actually, so on the top side, the two that flank the main entrance which would be east, the eastern entrance. We have two, one on either side, and then one possible one at the very west piece which would be phase two, that might be another way to sign to, where we're requesting to be able to signal that this is the Fountains. And so that would, the illustration of that elevation is included with a stone base which is what is typically required. We have requested that a lot of our stone at the Fountains of Gateway is Texas stone, so we import it from Texas. It's something that Scott Gravy really loved about when he visited Texas, and so instead of, I think it's a, is it Indiana limestone or Kentucky, Kentucky field stone, which is typically what's done down Medical Center, we're requesting that it fit more so within the campus which is a Kentucky, or sorry, a Texas limestone and variant there. On page 19, we're looking at development ID and building ID signage. These are represented on the site plan via the blue, green, and yellow dots. The yellow dots on that which are two future connections to other developments and also the Medical Center area, so we're trying to connect there. We want to put what we're calling a small development ID sign, stands three feet tall, four feet wide, say welcome to the Fountains of Gateway. At the entrance of all the major buildings, we are proposing to put a tenant or a building ID sign. That would be if we split up that office building into multiple tenants, you could see we could fit something like six tenants there, but it would not be, that way that signage for that tenant, so if we just have like a 5,000 square foot tenant, they don't get to name the building, but they have like a nice little short sign at the entrance so that people can find them. And then also, the attached building entry signs, which is the blue ones, kind of illustrated, it's a little small, it's kind of a little small there, but basically over building entries we're requesting to be able to outline that this is a building entry sign and possibly if, say, a large tenant takes up all 80,000 square feet, they may have that ability to name that sign as like this is X and that, you know, so and so, here's the entrance, to identify that separate from the retail tenants. Any questions on those major signage? Okay. Landlord allowable temporary sign types, so primarily, let's see, sorry, the, we're looking at directional signs, so we've kind of limited that a little bit. What we've tried to do is say landlord is allowed to do this set of signs, and then tenants are allowed to do these set of signs outside of like building applied signs. This temporary sign in particular, we'd probably want to look at the pennants which would be above and beyond. We have 51 light poles on campus currently planned, and we are wanting to do something to the right that you would see on number 21, page 21 there where it has a double pennant. We would limit these pennants to Fountains Development ID signs, holiday flags, and then special development oriented events. So when we bring out the ice rink during the winter, we might do a special pennant sign there. So what we're doing, if you go to the very next page, page 22, we have outlined with blue dots where all these poles would take place at, how they're currently planned. I think there's, like I said, 51 of these. These are also lights on top of them, so they're pedestrian lighting as well that we would double as pennant lights. And so we are asking that we would be allowed to put two pennants per pole, and there are the pole locations. And project signs, I think we, project signs out at the road, so we have reserved the three typical signs that we would post out there near the ROW to be project sign oriented, so we have, you know, the leasing signs, the typical leasing signs and those things out there, and we've reserved that for landlord directive. In addition, I don't know if it's in this one, I'm just going to, I will say the only temporary sign that we have allowed that's in here for the tenant, we've restricted them to just retail tenants allowed to have a sandwich board on the sidewalk, and we've requested to, that's elsewhere in this document, each retail tenant is allowed one sandwich board in front on the sidewalk, and we have 20-foot sidewalks, so that shouldn't be an issue. On to page 23, stream lighting. These are these very nice decorative lightings that give that really great warm glow and ambiance. We have strategized to put these in places where restaurants in particular will be located on the corners and in between buildings through these little alleyways. The purpose is to really create a warm glow in between the buildings that would be very inviting and a great place to dine on and eat. So we have outlined 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 locations where these might occur. On page 24, this is a significant difference. We have what is a lawn in the middle, and if you've been to the Fountains of Gateway, you've seen this lawn with the structures up above there. At the end of that lawn, furthest into the site, and I had the, it was, I think it was like 600 feet or so from, I don't see it on here, but I can't, it's a little bit blurry, but from the ROW is a projector screen. This is where we plan to host in partnership with the city, movies under the stars and these type events. We have provided restrictions for this, such as no large advertisements that are scrolling through and all these kind of things, but we have asked for the permission to show movies, live sporting events, so when the Preds or MTSU is on there or any of these kind of games, and we want to host people to come out and enjoy an evening, we would like to display that, and we've signed up with these, you know, these kind of packages with DirecTV to be able to display those kind of things. In addition, this truss system that suspends this projector and this projection screen includes lights on it. We intend to host events and musical, musical type events and have a stage up there and have these lights, and so it is equipped with, again, RGB lights, both on the outside that are directional, and then it has linear lights that are embedded within the truss system. The truss has a sleeve on it that is opaque or translucent white that allows that to glow and to be able to change colors with those RGBs and be coordinated. This is another, number, or page 25, a quick view of that lawn, and on this we have outlined all of these RGB lights that change colors that are considered, that are being considered kind of part of that signage ordinance that we're requesting. So during the summer, it would be the plaza lawn, and during the winter it would be the renter and ice rink, and we kind of set up the two scenarios and what we're requesting with each one of those. Some, just to talk briefly about these lights, we've set up time limits. I don't remember off the top of my head, but time limits of how much often it can change. I think it's every 60 minutes is the max it can ever change. Our intention is actually just to leave it one color all the time except for special events. During a concert, if there was a live concert here, we are asking that we be allowed to utilize all those lights to be a part of that concert if it's within this plaza stage and any building faces that have color lights, which I'll get to in a second, that those lights would also be allowed to change for the concert. So only within this framed plaza, all those colored lights would be able to change and do something for like if Garth Brooks was up there and having a party, like we would, they would have access to all of that. In addition, you'll see the splash pad. The splash pad is lit by RGB lights, and so as these water streams are 15 feet in the air, they illuminate and they are, they change colors. And then during the holiday season, we plan on purchasing a 35-foot Christmas tree and having a tree lighting ceremony, and we are asking for that to be considered as well as that will have multicolored lights and white lights, and then all the trees on campus will have multicolored lights or white, sorry, the white lights during the events and then during the year, we plan to keep those as well, but we won't be displaying them. I think we have it on here as from November 15th to February 29th is what we're requesting to be able to display these Christmas lights and multicolored and constant white lights. So that would be limited to within that display time during that November to February time period. And I think I covered that one. So the last few pages on 26, 27, and 28, these are the three buildings. Two are constructed already and one is in construction documents, so we're designing it currently. What we have done, since we have a very extensive light program at the Fountains of Gateway, we have outlined for your consideration all of these lights. In blue, we have outlined lights that can change color. In green, we have outlined lights that are constant white. And so the blue lights would be held to the same, or the blue lights that can change color would be held to the same standards as that plaza, not changing more than every 60 minutes, so it's not creating a distraction, but they would be colorful. Scott Gravy's favorite color is that purplish blue, and so that whole campus would be, and that front fountain that I told you about, that RGB light would be synchronized. The other thing is that all buildings and all lights, there is a little piece, I think on one of the earlier paragraphs that says, bullet point that says that all the lights will be the same. So we're not going to have an array of lights, but it's really about the campus ambiance that we're trying to get after. So we'll do, and the plan is, so since we have nine buildings on campus, is that when a building goes through Design Review Committee and Planning Commission, that we would also include a separate submittal for the PSO that outlines the light design so that you would be able to review that as well and approve it simultaneously, but two separate applications with the building design and the lighting design with that building. And that would then update, it's a fairly lengthy process to update a PSO, but that's how we would take care of that. And I think that is all the major changes, and I hope I didn't miss anything. Are there any questions? Or did I miss anything?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions from the Planning Commission?
I'm going to have somebody, you want to wait left of the public hearing?
Whatever you'd like. All those up there, you might as well.
I just wonder if we are going to see any of these lights. I mean, it's kind of, I just, you know, I'm not very good at picturing this piece of paper and what it's really going to look like, and so I just feel like I can't imagine that I'm not going to like it because I love everything that I see out at the fountain.
Thank you.
But I don't want, I just think it looks hard, like on page 26, to approve a lighting plan based on those blue lines and the green lines and what those are really going to look like on the building. I mean, to me, it looks like a lot of light and a lot of like the bluish purple color light. You know, the white lights might be one thing, but I don't know, and like over the projector screen, the actual fixture that is there, again, I'm assuming that it's a very nice looking fixture as I would expect that it would be, but all we see here is this little triangle, so I don't really know what the fixture looks like. Does that, is it, is anything I need to worry about? I mean, what is that fixture?
I can describe it for you. Unfortunately, I did not bring a picture of that fixture, but it is a black fixture that's about eight inches in diameter, and it's relatively flat. It's LED, so it's very compact, and it sits on the bottom of that truss and is angled so that it focuses down kind of on the stage area.
Okay.
So I would, these are installed, they're out there.
It's just like one of those flat and it's all light underneath, is that?
Yes. It doesn't shine in every direction. The triangles, so what I was attempting to do for you was with those triangles indicate direction of light, so that, one of the things that we were wanting to do, still taking into consideration night sky and all these kind of things, is all these lights either fall off by the time it hits the top of the, most of them do not hit the top of the building except maybe some channel lights that we have some cove lights in the building, so a good example would be the, on page 26, there is a blue dashed line, if you, I don't know if you can kind of see my, my mouse up there, but there is a cove light that just kind of glows, but it doesn't go beyond the building, so it doesn't shine up into the sky. And as well, these triangular patterns that I'm showing you, they would die, they really die really before the fourth floor. Once you get up to that point, they kind of fade off and they kind of go away. It's just kind of more of a light. A really great example, have you, do you pass Medical Center, the Holiday Inn down there? I don't know if this is a good example, I don't know if you like it, but.
At night, if that would be.
I will say.
But I would guess it's more of like what you would see as a normal like landscape light type thing. It's not a bright, I mean, it's not going to just look like a whole beam over the campus where.
I think page two may be a good example of something that may give you kind of an idea of what I think the lighting is intended to do, which is more of a.
Glow.
An ambiance lighting that would change, not that the whole campus is going to glow purple, but if, you know, wherever the accent lightings would be, I think that kind of shows what the intentions would be, and I'm assuming they're purple in our booklet here, but I'm assuming if it were to change to red or blue, which Bob would like. It would, it would, I think that's probably what the intent is.
The intent is more of a soft glow than a harsh light.
I'll say I actually really like what's going on out there. I like what you've done so far and.
Thank you.
And I like this as well. I think that the, some of the canopy lighting and stuff like that, I think has more of a urban look, and I think that's a good thing. The projector screen, I think I'll find interesting. If you show MTSU football games on Saturday night, you might want to show World Outreach on Sunday morning.
There you go.
Just so people know there's hope, but the.
Hello.
The, but, but, but no, the, but the concept is very good. It looks very positive. I think it's a true amenity to the Gateway, and I'm encouraged by it.
Just for the record, we did, Mr. Robert Holt, the Building and Codes Department, did just pass out to Planning Commission members for their reference a picture from that night.
Okay. Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
Just one. I mean, I like the lighting. I think it's going to be really nice. My question would be, are there, will there be distractions from the motorists, and is there a safety issue from those distractions when you're having a concert and all the lighting moving around?
I would hope not, to be honest. Could it possibly be? Yes, and you could possibly say that, you know, these new digital billboards are going to be brighter than what this is going to be. When you're going down that highway and that digital billboard is like lighting up the interior of my car, that is way brighter than what we're actually doing here. It is, I will say that it is fairly interior to the campus, so that was part of the decision in our designing of this, to put this plaza as far interior to the campus as possible, and I think that will reduce any kind of distraction that you see. In addition, the tree and the landscaping that is out there kind of towards the road, I think that is also going to reduce, you can barely see into this location from the, let's see, going east on Medical Center, and by the time you're turning that Medical Center on going west towards I-24, you've almost passed it before you knew that you were even to the Fountains. So. I don't think a concert will be that much of a distraction, but that is kind of, and since we have not had a concert, I can't really speak to that truly, to be honest. But it's a very great question and definitely a concern, so.
But under normal operations, I was reading over it this afternoon, and it says that the transition would only be once every 60 minutes, so.
Yes.
I mean, it's not like it's changing constantly and you're driving down the road and you see this change. I mean, it's once an hour.
And that would be, well, and then just remember the, what we have, what is currently in here except for concerts, and so where concerts would be able to do.
Did the ice rink maybe say it was an exception or something? I'm trying to remember, Adam.
I don't think, no, I don't think we have it pulsing or anything like that for the ice rink. I think it's just for a concert, if that person wanted to do a lighting show, that they would be able to do that.
From, looking at the map, it looks like the location of the plaza would be pretty much screened from Medical Center Parkway, except coming in the main entryway right there. The buildings would screen it off almost entirely.
You could pretty much only see it when you pass that entry and then it's gone.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
We may need to call you back up after the public hearing if there's other questions. Okay, if you've never attended a public hearing with the city of Murfreesboro, let me tell you how we do it here. We'll open the public hearing shortly. I'll ask anybody to come forward to the microphone that would like to speak either for or against a proposal. If you would, when you come to the microphone, please state your name clearly and give your address for the record. Keep your comments or questions to no more than three minutes, so everybody will have an opportunity to come up and speak if they'd like to. Make all your comments and questions to the Planning Commission. If you do have questions, the staff will make a note of your questions, and we'll try to get those answered at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing on this matter at this time, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Anybody at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. You must have done a good job in your explanation. Any other comments or questions about the Planning Commission?
If there are none, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is made for approval and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The next public hearing is a zoning application for approximately 4.8 acres located along Burtonob Road and Veterans Parkway to be rezoned from RS-15 to CH. Prashant Patel is applicant. Mr. Blomley, good evening, sir.
Good evening Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. Let me start out by saying, hopefully my voice will hold out, a little bit, a little bit shot, but I'll do my best. The next public hearing is a rezoning request for a 4.8 acre parcel located at the southeast corner of Burtonob Road and Veterans Parkway. It's on the map in front of us. The map is a little bit deceiving, the property is actually owned.
The map is a little bit deceiving, the property is actually only this property here. Anytime that we rezone property by ordinance, the right-of-way is included in the new zoning boundary. So, we've included the adjacent Burtonob and Veterans Parkway right-of-way, just as a matter of housekeeping. But, for all intents and purposes, the rezoning is the parcel at the southeast corner of Burtonob and Veterans. It was annexed into the city earlier this year, at the time that the West Park property was annexed into the city. It was one of the adjacent parcels that the, after being contacted by the city staff, that the owners petitioned the city for annexation. This property is developed with a one-single-family residence. It's a rental, single-family residence. The owners have requested that the property be rezoned from RS-15, which was the interim zoning classification given to the property when it was annexed to CH. And I think that the property owners petitioned the city for annexation with the hopes of having the property rezoned at some point in the future, and the future is now, because they have made the request to rezone to Commercial Highway. Property is directly to the north of an additional, of a tract that has already requested to be rezoned to Commercial Highway. It's currently at the city council level. The public hearing was held at the city council level on July the twentieth. The city council deferred action in order to, in order for the applicants to have some restrictive covenants drafted so that the city council could have some assurances that certain uses that are permitted by right in the Commercial Highway zone would not be allowed on that property. Staff has made the applicant aware of that and will be getting him a copy of the restrictive covenants once the hordes to the south have finalized their draft. They have not finalized their draft, so that's, that application is still pending before the city council. The Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted by the planning commission in July, depicts a future land use classification of the subject property as business park, which is primarily an office category. That business park recommendation of the plan was something that was originated before the city acquired the property for the West Park. Staff thinks that the, that the West Park, the proposed West Park, which is moving forward rapidly, we've met with the designers of that, staff did, last week. I know they're working towards getting construction plans to the planning commission, a site plan for its review over the next several months. And we feel that, staff feels that the proposed West Park has altered the vision for the area and that this may be an appropriate opportunity, or an appropriate instance to deviate from the future land use map of the comprehensive plan because the West Park has changed, kind of changed the dynamic for that area. Staff expects that the park will draw regional traffic and that it will necessitate the development of additional interchange-oriented commercial uses on both sides of the interchange. And the proposed CH zone for the property will put in place the zoning to enable commercial development to serve patrons of the park as well as interstate travelers. And so, the applicants have made the request to rezon the property to Commercial Highway. With that being said, the planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. Mr. Patel is here, if you have any questions for him, he's one of the co-owners of the property, and he is the official applicant on the request.
Okay. Seeing members of the planning commission have questions for Mr. Patel? None at this time? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Questions or comments for members of the planning commission? If there are none, we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion to approve, sub to any staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The next public hearing is a zoning application for approximately 8.33 acres located along Esquire Drive and Mary Beth Court to be rezoned from RS-10 to RS-6 and approximately 9.24 acres to be rezoned from RS-10 to RS-12. Camp Properties LLC is the developer, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you Chairman Lamb. The subject property, as you mentioned, is located at the terminus of Esquire Drive and the terminus of Mary Beth Court. Both of those are county roads that are, that lead into, or that are part of county subdivisions. The subject property was the subject of an annexation and zoning request in, I believe it was early, or late 2016, early 2017. The applicant requested that, if you'll follow my cursor, the southern portion of the property, which fronts on Osborne Lane, to be zoned RS-12 simultaneous with annexation. And the northern portion of the property, which is the portion that's adjacent to Esquire Drive and Mary Beth Court, excuse me, to be zoned RS-10 simultaneous with annexation. The applicants are now requesting rezoning of the area colored in orange on the map from RS-10 to RS-12 and the area colored in blue from RS-10 to RS-6. The RS-6 zoning classification was approved by the city council as a part of a recent zoning ordinance amendment. And so it's now in effect, actually became, went into effect just a few days ago. The reason the applicant is requesting the change to the smaller lot size for the blue area is because of, according to the applicant's engineer, some wetlands have been discovered on the property. And so I'll go to an exhibit prepared by Mr. Taylor with SEC, who is representing Camp Properties. So if you'll notice, the area here, outlined in the hatched area, and the area here, are two areas that SEC has indicated are wetlands. And they wish to leave those as-is and to not develop lots on those. So, really what they're trying to do is to recoup the number of lots that they anticipated that they would be developing with the RS-10 zone. The RS-6 zone obviously will allow a much smaller lot size, but the density is actually in range of what the, what the future land use plan of the comprehensive plan would allow. And I'll go over that in just a moment. But as you can see, they anticipate the development of thirty-two single-family lots on the area that they're proposing to zone RS-6. And now I'll jump back just a moment and describe what's around the property. I mentioned the county subdivisions to the north, the balance of the property to the south. To the east of the subject property is the Meadowwood, single-family residential subdivision, which is zoned, a combination of zoning classifications RS-10, RS-12, and RS-15. To the west of the subject property is the developing Valley Brook PRD, which consists of single-family attached homes and 6,000, 8,000, and I believe 11,000 square foot minimum lot sizes. The future land use map of the comprehensive plan recommends that the property develop as suburban residential. Suburban residential category calls for a density of two to 3.54 dwelling units per acre. And it indicates that RS-10, 12, and 15 are the zoning districts that most closely align with this category. So at first glance, the existing RS-10 zoning is consistent with that recommendation. However, it also indicates that smaller lots clustered around common open space are appropriate as well. And the concept plan for the overall development submitted with the rezoning request proposes an overall density of just over one and a half units per acre. And that one and a half units per acre is actually less than the recommended density put forth by the comprehensive plan. So there'd be a significant amount of undevelopable area, which puts their density actually below the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. So in that respect, it's actually consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, in staff's opinion. The planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing, after which it will need to discuss the matter and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. I believe Mr. Matt Taylor with SEC has a few comments before the public hearing. I would mention that we did hold a neighborhood meeting on this, and I believe about ten of the, ten adjacent residents were in attendance at that meeting. Mr. Lewis was there at the meeting, I was not. And of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you may have as well.
Thank you Matthew, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you Mr. Lamb, thank you Matthew. I'm Matt Taylor from SEC here in town. And Matthew did a good job explaining the history of the project and while we're here, we did find a significant amount of wetlands as we got into the design of the subdivision, about two and a half acres on the portion that's on to the north of Bear Branch, which really came up into the side a lot more. We thought those wetlands were gonna be more linear and follow the creek. And so it wiped out about ten of what we had planned of twenty-eight lots north of Bear Branch. And so this plan lets us get back to basically that same density, at the same time preserving about fifty percent of the property as open space. We have also talked with city engineering and Parks and Rec Department. They have some interest in a possible donation of this land for a park, which also follows the comprehensive plan that Matthew mentioned earlier, which recommends the development of smaller, more localized parks and greenway systems. So, we have started those conversations. As Matthew indicated, we did have a neighborhood meeting last Monday, the twenty-eighth of August. We invited about ninety people, had about ten participants that night. We walked through the reasons for the request, we walked through the concept plan and described our house footprints. We anticipated about, the houses arranged from about sixteen-hundred to twenty-six-hundred square feet in size, with that sweet spot being around twenty-two-hundred square feet. And then we also described that with the RS-6, it commits us to basically three sides of masonry materials. Since that meeting, we have continued to have talks with some of the neighbors, made some further revisions to the concept plan. And if you will, I'd like to show you what those revisions are before the public hearing.
And while he's doing that, one thing I'd like to correct, it's, what the ordinance says is that each side must be a minimum of seventy, seventy-five percent brick, stone, or fiber cement siding. So that would not permit one side to be vinyl, it would just be a maximum of twenty-five percent of the facade on each elevation would be allowed to be a material that was not one of those three materials.
In our conversations, we had a lot, a single lot planned right there. The neighbors felt like that was kind of an awkward spot for just a lot by itself, especially with them looking out the front doors. We took that off of our plan. We also had originally had lots snug right against this property line here, which is basically their backyard. So we disputed all of this away from there, create more green space between the neighbors and the lots. And then Ms. Ferris, who lives right here, had indicated some concerns about some privacy because there are pools on that side. There's some existing trees and existing fences over here. We basically took and slid those property lines away from there to preserve those trees and fence lines for.
When you say you slid them, Matt, how far did you actually move them, feet-wise?
It was about, it's about twenty feet. And that gets, essentially she's using that as part of her yard right now, and that gets it to the tree line that she wanted to preserve. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Thank you.
Thank you Matt. Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this matter, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Hello, my name is John Garrett, and I own a house, four houses from the end of Esquire, thirty-one fifty-eight. That's currently a rental property for me. And I was at the neighborhood meeting, and there was a lot of talk about the wetlands and the open space and a park and possibly an HOA for the park. And nothing seems to be very concrete about whether or not it's ever gonna get done. And so I'm wondering if the plan should include more specific ownership of the property that might be donated to the city, the wetlands, the open space, and what have you. And as far as the lot size go, I think it's small, it's fifty-foot wide compared to twenty, compared to the other lots that are already along Esquire that are county older properties with narrow street, drainage, ditch drainage. I guess it's gonna convert at the end of the street to sidewalks and govers.
Okay, thank you sir. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name's Scott Beavers, I own 3126 Esquire Drive, which is one lot away from the proposed R-6 section at the end of Esquire Drive. We do appreciate Mr. Camp's concessions to us as far as the removal of one of the lots that we found quite awkward to the initial plan. We do have some concerns over the fact that we are going a reduction of a lot size of twenty thousand square feet plus, in some instances, almost thirty thousand square feet, down to lot sizes of six to sixty-five hundred square feet. But, we do ask that, you know, as long as he's taking into account the current lot sizes and the buffer zones that he's placed into his new plan, we do find that to be a lot more agreeable than the initial request. But, it is a large jump, or I should say, a large reduction in lot size from what is currently on Esquire Drive and also in the Meadow Hill subdivision to what is being proposed. But, once again, we do appreciate his concessions to us, thank you.
Thank you sir.
My name's Alex Smith, I live at thirty-one forty Esquire Drive, across from one of the lots they were proposing. And like everybody said, we do appreciate those changes. However, my concerns are the same as far as the incongruency, you know, from our neighborhood to the sudden change, buffer zone or not, to, from what we already have, it's just gonna be kind of a mismatch there. I'm kinda almost looking at them like building an apartment complex basically next door to us, in a nutshell. That's how I feel about it. And also I had some concerns about, or questions about if a park does go there, I mean, what's the access gonna be for us? And I'd really like to see it not happen, to be honest with you, at least the R-6. The rest of it I'm okay with, thank you.
Thank you Mr. Smith. Anybody else? Last call. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Taylor, what about HOA ownership of the wetlands?
So, if the city does not take the par, not take, accept the donation of the wetlands and stream side and the open space, then we would set up an HOA and they would maintain that. I do wanna make clear, we're perfectly fine with the donation. We do have quite a few details to work out with engineering and Parks and Rec. But there, those are some meetings and paperwork that would need to be done, that would be really well after this.
Mr. Taylor, would there not be, whether the city and your client agree to transfer the property, there will still be common areas outside of that area that would need to be maintained, which would necessitate the need for an HOA, correct?
If there, if there are open spaces that will, that are not donated, then yes, we would still have an HOA.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions from the Planning Commission?
Just one brief comment. I hope that the negotiations work out to, to accept the donation of the property, not only from the Parks and Recreation standpoint, but from the need of wetland area for the development of other roadways in the city, it, it's advantageous. It's a win-win situation, I think, for the area out there, and it's, it'll be beneficial to the city in the long run. So I think we're doing everything that we possibly can to make sure that the, the city does wind up with possession of that property.
Anything else? If there's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item D is an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately twenty-six-point-five acres located along Veals Road. Randy Freedsum is the applicant. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. The next item on the agenda is, it should be, actually be thirty-one-point-five acres. However, it's going to be staff's recommendation, the Planning Commission remove the additional study area. On the map before, you'll see the property, the requested area includes the four parcels colored in purple, or pink, depending on which screen you're looking at. And the additional study area that the Planning Commission recommended that we study for, for this annexation hearing is the area colored in orange. That area is, houses an existing cell tower. The property owners who owned the three adjacent parcels also owned the cell tower, also owned the cell tower property. They have since sold their three parcels to the other property owner. So in essence, the owners of the parcel with the cell tower no longer have any, any interest in any of the, the properties that are, that are being requested for annexation. And, and we do not anticipate receiving an annexation petition from those property owners. So while it would be great to be able to get that parcel in in order to make the city limits lines more, more consistent, it does not seem like we're going to get an annexation petition in for that parcel. And so at this time, it would be staff's recommendation that we would remove the additional study area if the Planning Commission wishes to move forward with the annexation of the four parcels that were actually requested. With that being said, I'll go over a little bit about the, the annexation request. As you can see, it's directly adjacent to the existing city limits, so no additional parcels have to be annexed in order to, to reach the existing city limits. That's the Crestview subdivision, the north of the subject property. And, excuse me, property is, is along the north side of Veals Road, it's within the city's urban growth boundary, and the property owner has requested, and as I mentioned, the property, the same property owner owns all four parcels now, and he has requested annexation for all four parcels. There's a zoning request, RS ten, simultaneous with annexation, which is the next item on the agenda. A couple points of note with regards to the plan of services, sanitary sewer is not available to the subject property. However, as you know, the city has recently gotten into the business of, of permitting and operating step systems in the county, or in the, within the city limits. And so developers requesting annexation but not having access to city sewer now have the option to be approved for a, or to request approval for a step system from the Water and Sewer Board. So the applicant has done that, and it's been approved, subject to a minimum of sixty-five single-family lots being developed on the property. So staff would note that the developer will be required to execute a pre-annexation agreement to ensure that the city has provided funding for operation and maintenance costs. In other words, ensuring that he will get to that sixty-five lots that's required in order to make the, the system financially feasible for the city to take over. Also, there's some issue about how the applicant will, will get water to the subject property. There are several, actually several ways that he could get water. Property's currently in the Water and Sewer Department's service boundary. However, C U D actually maintains the line in front of the property. But if they went with that C U D line, it's only a six-inch line, and in order to meet fire protection requirements, all the houses would be required to be sprinkled. If the Water and Sewer Department serves it, it has a line on Bradyville Pike that's approximately thirteen-hundred feet away. But the closest line, however, is at the end of Lincoia Drive in the Crestview subdivision. So if the applicant can obtain a, an easement to bring that water line across the property to the west, or excuse me, to the east, the hall property, to access his property, that would be the most economical way to go. So there are a number of options that the applicant can use to provide water service to the property and to get the proper fire protection. However, he has not determined which is the most feasible at this time. So we would ask that the plan of services be approved, subject to one of those items, either, either of the two lines from the Water and Sewer Department or sprinklering the, the proposed homes. So that's really the main issue that's, that's in flux right now with the plan of services. But I think the applicant, if this annexation is recommended for approval at the Planning Commission tonight, will have time to continue to work on that issue before the, before the city council public hearing and first reading. We would recommend that, as I mentioned, that any approval be made, subject to the removal of that additional study area, so that the study area would look like this. Voila. And I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. And Mr. Clyde Roundtree and Mr. Randy Freedsum, representing this request, are in the audience today, if you have any questions for them.
Okay. Your voila did not come up.
Oh.
It did hit.
I would ask the cable department to bring up my voila. All right, there we go. It didn't have as much oomph with, with it not coming up on the screen, so I apologize for that. As you know, I like oomph.
Anytime you can eliminate orange is good.
Hey now. I think a war eagle's in...
Not all red or orange, of course.
Okay, good.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Blomley from the Planning Commission?
Or black and gold.
If there's no questions, then I'll open the public hearing. Ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Good evening, esteemed council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alan, and this is my wife, Olivia Chambers. We live at two-eight-nine-seven Bradyville Pike. We weren't quite sure whether or not the step system was part of the annexation part of it, or part of the rezoning part of it, but we have a few concerns and we have a few questions. The concerns are the fact that even though we understand capitalism, we agree in growth, we support Murphysboro, you know, we're all for that, but we want to do it in a very responsible manner. Bradyville Pike especially has no burn. It cannot absorb very much more traffic at all. We recently just had a four-car accident right in front of our house. We seem to have quite a few accidents right there on that portion of, of Bradyville. When the mosque was being built, there was quite a bit of traffic, there's quite a great influx of traffic even right now, now that the mosque is operational. We're not quite sure of the ability for that intersection and that area of, of traffic to be able, to be addressed properly for the safety of the community, you know, that's being involved. We also have an issue so far as the safety and security within the area. We totally understand that there's got to be a line, a border between city, county, and so on and so forth. But unfortunately, wherever that line is, those people usually have to deal with the fact that you're city and we're county. Two weeks ago, we had someone steal a tire right out of the, of our driveway, right off of our car, and our property is very well lit up at night. So to have this increase of, of congestion, the influx of people, without the services being administered to the people who are within the two-hundred-foot range area is another concern. The other concern was the fact that this step system, we understand that C U D had made a comment that anyone who had the step system, mowing or cutting is not allowed with the drip fields are wet. We have not permitted the soils to be used for recreational purposes because we're concerned about the compactation and the possibility of destroying the percolation from the water. So the step system that they're wanting to put in, don't forget, we have a watershed right next to that property, and we have a flood plain, I guess, adjacent or part of that property that kind of runs down right into the Fox, Black Fox Reservoir, or Laker, or whatever you want to call it. If I remember correctly, when the buildings were being put in there on Bradyville, across from the church, there were some questions about turtles and some other things that were, you know, protected elements. So as long as these issues are addressed, we don't necessarily have a problem with it, we just want to make sure that these serious concerns, or we consider to be serious concerns about safety, security, and the fact that there's a watershed next door, as long as those are firmly addressed, and commens, and, you know, and not compensated for, but dealt with, I guess, you know, we're in support of it, we're not against it, we just want to make sure that these things are, are firmly understood and looked into. But Bradyville especially, the, the safety and security, I'm serious, there's no burn to Bradyville at all. This is just increased traffic, which is fine, but let's address, address the issues as we, as we continue our growth in Murphysboro, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Blomley, would you briefly go over the, his concerns about the step field and the watershed?
I think that Mr. Huddleston, if he's, if he's willing, would be more qualified to address some of those concerns than I would.
I'm sure he'd be very willing. Mr. Huddleston, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb. Sam Huddleston, City Engineering Department. I think Mr. Chambers mentioned the C U D requirements for the step system, and actually, a step system is, is a state-approved septic disposal system. And so C U D's requirements are in line with the state's requirements, and the requirements that the Murphysboro Water and Sewer Department adopted are very similar to C U D's. And so the operation and maintenance of the drip fields would be very similar as far as restriction of use, restriction of, of mowing, and those sorts of things. So be very consistent with that. The step system does not have a discharge above, above ground. Like a home-based septic system is designed to absorb and infiltrate the septic tank effluent, and so there is not a discharge that would, that would leave the property above ground, making it to Black Fox Springs. In addition, our review of, of the plans, future plans, would require that they install stormwater management system that would manage water quality and quantity, and, and those elements should help protect the receiving stream there at Black Fox. And I'd be glad to answer any additional questions about those matters, if you have any.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Huddleston from the Planning Commission? Thank you, Sam. Any questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission?
What about his questions on, on traffic? I mean, I would take it this is not a...
City street.
I mean, it's not a city street, and it's not a overall large burden that's being added to it.
It's a state route.
Yeah.
And Bradyville Pike is a state route. Veals Road is a county road, and we are, including in the annexation, about twelve-to-thirteen-hundred linear feet of Veals Road right-of-way, which would become a city street. So we, the city would take on that for maintenance purposes. With regards to, you know, what, if any, roadway improvements would be required on Veals Road, I, I don't know, may, may ask Mr. Huddleston again, or Mr. Balachandra, to address that. And as far as the impact of traffic on to Veals and Bradyville, I think I'll defer that as well.
Yes. Chairman Lamb, it would be our expectation that the developer address Veals Road. It, it's a street that does not meet the current city standards as far as width and road section. There are a couple ways to do that. One of them is to construct improvements. The second would be to place deposit of funds with the city for perhaps future improvements. And as a general rule, we like to see improvements built rather than escrowed when it, because those, of course, have an impact right away. But there are occasions where it's not practical to, to install those improvements, and so the, the funds are escrowed with the city, and then it would be reserved for a later project. I will tell you, we, we, we don't have anything in mind for Veals Road today as far as a citywide project. Bradyville Pike, you'll recall, we have a project in the works, it's, it's moving through the, the design process to the, from really Broad Street to the intersection at Rutherford Boulevard and just beyond, including some signalization work and turning lanes there. You mentioned that Bradyville Pike is a state route, and so any future actions on that would, would obviously require their involvement. The balance of Bradyville Pike is, is, will be on the, is one of the elements of the twenty-forty transportation plan that's, you know, in process right now, will be coming back before you for public hearings and review in the very near future. But we do anticipate the ability to address it at some point, as perhaps the city grows in that direction. Veals Road in, in Bradyville Pike, you know, that was analyzed sometime back for signalization. Obviously, that'd be the intersection as, as traffic counts grow in that area, that once it meets the warrants, a petition could be made to T dot to signalize that intersection. That intersection is currently county, and so that would not be a city action to signalize that intersection. Although we do operate all the city, all the county signals under contract with the county, the county actually takes the lead in, in getting those reviewed and approved and installed, then we actually take over the operation and maintenance under contract with them, there, there's a reimbursement agreement there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or have any more discussion about Veals or Bradyville.
Sam, I got a question, not, it's regarding the previous question. So you made the comment, and so did the gentleman with respects to not mowing the drip field. So what is the maintenance, above-ground maintenance of the drip field, or is there any?
Well, there, there is above-ground maintenance. I think the, the statement Mr. Chambers made was the restrictions on mowing the drip field during wet periods, so that you don't lose the, if you put heavy equipment on when it's wet, you will perhaps damage the, the soil absorption capacity there. And so it's really operation and maintenance. Now, the, the step program that the city of Murphysboro adopted, our Water and Sewer Department takes over the operation and maintenance of that step system. So it'd be city crews, and, and they would follow their normal routines on that. Obviously, that area can't be set aside for, for active recreation. Most of them are fenced off to, to prohibit access, so you don't get that loss of soil absorption capacity due to overuse and abuse and, and improper uses.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I know with, with it being annexed, it would also be covered by the Murphysboro Police Department. So even though some of the roadway that would be traveled would be county roads in order for them to access this property, I would say the increased police presence would only improve the situation with security in the neighborhood.
There's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion for approval of the annexation plan of services and annexation petition with the specific plan of services that you mentioned regarding the minimum houses, those things to still be worked out before final annexation, but that is...
This is excluding the additional study area.
Yes, with the voila property taken out.
Well put, Mr. Blomley.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next public hearing is a zoning application for the same property. Next public hearing is a zoning application for the same property, twenty-six point five acres, located along Veal's Road, to be zoned RS-ten simultaneous with annexation. Randy Freedson is the applicant. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. As you mentioned, this is the companion zoning request. Mr. Freedson has requested a zoning classification of RS-ten simultaneous with annexation. That's a single-family residential with a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. I've already mentioned that due to the proposed step system, the applicant is trying to hit sixty-five lots, or he'll be required to hit sixty-five lots. And I don't know that he would have the ability to get much more than that. As you know, a significant portion of the property would be taken up with the step system. And so he wouldn't be able to achieve the density that he would if it was on, if he was on city sewer. Property does contain the four parcels that were voted to be recommended for annexation in the previous public hearing. It's twenty-six point five acres, including the right-of-way in front of the subject property on Veal's Road. The request being RS-ten is consistent with the property to the north. You can see the existing Crestview subdivision to the north, which contains the streets such as Medford Campbell, Lancoya, Ozark, Stafford, Westerwald, et cetera. Is zoned RS-ten, is developed as RS-ten. To the, immediately to the west of the subject property is the Cell Tower parcel, as well as two religious land uses, the Islamic Center of Murfreesboro and the Grace Baptist Church, which are both located in the unincorporated county. Further to the west, across Bradyville Pike, is the Fox Creek subdivision, which is zoned RS-12, which minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet, of course. There are a number of residential uses in the county, including county subdivisions located along Bradyville Pike and Veal's Road. The, in addition, the Brady Estates subdivision, which is right next to Fox Creek Estates and is developing in the city, is also zoned RS-ten, which is what the applicant is requesting. Future land use map of the 2035 comprehensive plan recommends that the subject property develop as suburban residential, which, as we learned from a previous request, is a density of two to three point four, three point five four dwelling units per acre. And the plan recognizes the RS-ten zoning district as being consistent with the suburban residential recommendation. So with that, in that regard, the request is consistent with the Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive land use plan. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. And as I mentioned, Mr. Roundtree and Mr. Freedson are here representing this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
This is just a curiosity question. If the developer works it out that he gets the easement and he gets access to sewer line, how many more lots would he have? You're saying that its maximum is going to be sixty-five with respects to having a step system. What's the number of lots if he works it out where he gets sewer?
I think, I think the easement that you're referring to is actually a water line.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's the, if you'll follow my mouse here...
He's going to have to put in a step system, no matter what.
Yeah, the step system is really his only, his only option for sewer-ing the property.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's a minimum of sixty-five.
That's correct, a minimum.
The city is requiring.
That's correct.
To financially make it work.
They found that it's not, it's not feasible, because the city will take over and operate and maintain the step system, and that it's just not feasible, from a business standpoint, to do it for any fewer than sixty-five lots.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? In case I'll open the public hearing. Ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Anybody at all? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments by the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion for approval, the RS-ten request.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item F, zoning application for approximately fourteen point nine acres, located along Burrows Avenue, to be rezoned from RS-12 to RS-6. Leonard Holmes is a developer. Mr. Anthony, good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. We'll give Matthew a break for a little bit. I think he needs it.
Thank you.
Leonard Holmes wishes to rezone a fourteen point nine acre portion of the Blackman Meadows subdivision from RS-12 to RS-6. The subject property is located between the existing northern terminus of Burrows Avenue and Interstate 840. The property is currently undeveloped, and it was previously designated as Sections Five, Six, and Seven of Blackman Meadows. The existing residential lots in Blackman Meadows, which are located south and east of the subject property, range in size from twelve thousand square feet to a little over sixteen thousand square feet. The RS-6 zoning, if approved, would allow for a single-family detached residential dwellings or residential lots of six thousand square feet, roughly half the size of the typical existing Blackman Meadows lot. Gross density could reach seven point two five dwelling units per acre for one hundred and eight total dwelling units. That is, of course, not taking into account any right-of-way dedication, environmental constraints, or any other constraints that may reduce that density. Murfreesboro 2035 shows the area as appropriate for suburban residential, which would allow density of up to three point five four dwelling units per acre. As with many other properties in the 2035 plan, the land use and density recommendations in this particular case appear to be reflective of the existing or currently approved development on this property. Adjacent zoning and land uses include vacant CF-zoned property on the west, a seven-acre single-family lot with RS-15 zoning on the north, the unbuilt Mattington Park PRD on the northeast, and existing sections of Blackman Meadows zoned RS-12 on the east and south. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing on this request and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. Matt Taylor from SEC is here representing the applicant, and he can discuss the request in more detail. Also want to point out that Matt did meet with some of the neighbors, and he can tell us maybe more about those discussions and any outcomes from those discussions as well. Staff can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Matt Taylor from SEC. As Donald said, we did have a neighborhood meeting basically exactly two months ago, on July sixth. We held that at the Blackman Community Center. I believe we had between thirty to forty participants. It was really more like a HOA meeting rather than a neighborhood meeting, because we were going into the existing Blackman Meadows and Oakton neighborhoods. We walked out of that meeting thinking that the meeting went fairly well. We felt like that because we had introduced the development team. We explained that we weren't building rental homes, which I think had been a concern and a previous problem in the neighborhood in some previous sections. We also explained that what we were building was larger and more expensive homes, even though they were smaller lots. And since then, we've continued to have an ongoing conversation with the HOA and the neighbors, and actually established an HOA advisory committee, I think is the best way to term that, in anticipation of us handing this over to them in the future. So I think we've got a good relationship with our neighbors. We have made the request really to get the smaller setbacks that the RS-6 allows, as well as have a higher floor area ratio, lot coverage, which the RS-12 didn't allow. Our house footprints are of such a size that we couldn't build those houses under the RS-12. With the RS-6, we are allowed to go to six thousand square feet, but I think just about all of our lots are around the eight thousand square foot mark. We just, we didn't change the road network from the previously approved master plan. We're leaving all that in place, and really just changing the lot width of these lots in the neighborhood. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. No questions, I'll open the public hearing. Ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Good evening. I'm Virgil Newgriffith, and I live at sixteen twenty John Lee Lane. I am the president of the Oakton Board of Directors. The board represents over forty homes in our neighborhood, and we also conjoin with Blackman Meadows and Princeton Oaks. In June of this year, as Mr. Taylor said, Land Management Group reached out and met with me personally to discuss not only the rezoning requests that would be happening, but the development plans and the timeline surrounding that. At their suggestion, we had a town hall meeting with our three neighborhoods, which is Princeton Oaks, Blackman Meadows, and Oakton. And we were able to listen to their presentation, were able to ask questions, and were able to agree upon some things between all the different entities. And so that was that the homes that would be purchased would be for individual families and not sold to rental companies outright. That the home values of the planned development are estimated to be higher than those of our current homes in the neighborhood, which would help increase our property values. And also that an advisory board would be set up with individuals from Land Management Group, Leonard Holmes, Gertner and Company, and Blackman Meadows. And so that way, there's an open line of communication during this entire process and that everyone was in the know. So not only has Bill Charles, Mr. Taylor, Leonard Holmes, we've witnessed them make an effort to make an inclusive community, not only with their current plans, but that they have the time and the dedication to ensure that they're building a strong, united relationship with all involved for the future state of our neighborhood. They've been transparent, they've been prompt to answer our questions and to address any concerns, and they've even begun to take place in neighborhood meetings and events. So on behalf of the Oakton Board of Directors and our larger community, I want to express our approval of the Land Management Group's request to rezone and their development plans for the remaining portion of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? I know that's hard to follow.
It's a nice change for a public hearing.
I just thank you for taking the time to come out and be on the positive side. We appreciate it.
Nobody else? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close this public hearing. Questions or comments by members of the Planning Commission?
And I'll also say thank you to Matt Taylor and the SEC team for doing a great job with your neighborhood meeting. So, sounds great.
We're ready for a motion. Ms. Jones, you're on a roll.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item G, proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding Section Two, interpretation and definitions, Chart One, uses permitted by the zoning district, and Chart Two, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements, and land use intensity ratios. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Anthony.
Thank you, sir. You may recall that we presented a rather lengthy zoning ordinance amendment related to multifamily housing to you earlier this year. That amendment included several components, one of which was a cap on the number of units that could be included in any multifamily residential project in the RM-12 and RM-16 zoning districts. The Planning Commission, when it considered that amendment, recommended that the city council set that cap at two hundred and fifty units. When we took it to the city council, the council lowered the number of units to one hundred. Upon a second reading, the council removed the cap altogether and asked staff to draft a new zoning ordinance amendment that would require all future multifamily residential projects to go through the planned development process. So that's what we have done with this amendment that we're presenting to you this evening. Multifamily residential would no longer be a by-right use in any district. We have excluded the CU district as the only one that would continue to allow by-right. With only a couple of exceptions, the CU district covers the state-owned MTSU campus, and other than that, not much private property. So that's the gist of it. We do have two minor additional components that are part of this amendment. First, this amendment would add an introductory paragraph to the end notes of Chart One. This paragraph previously appeared in the zoning ordinance, but it was inadvertently left off when the end notes were restored earlier this year. And a second additional component is to delete all references to the RM-22 district, which no longer exists. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing on this matter and then formulate a recommendation to the city council, and staff can try to answer any question that you may have.
Ms. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, sorry. I have one question, Mr. Anthony. You referenced for all future multifamily projects. Is that right? Is that what this said?
The way that it is currently written, it would be for, basically, anything that's not under construction at the time of passage would be affected by this ordinance. So, so even in, my understanding, the way that it's drafted at this time is that even if you have property that is currently zoned, RM-16 and RM-12, if you don't have a project under construction or an approved project, just because you have the zoning in place, you would still, if you wanted a multifamily project, you would still have to go through the planned development process.
So all zoning that's been pre-approved has to come back through?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I think that's what Mr...
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, let's open the public hearing and hear what the public has to say. Public hearing is now open. Please come forward.
Chairman Lamb and commission members, let me say first, it's an honor to be before you. I'm Roger Haley. I reside at fourteen forty-two Charleston Boulevard. I'm here tonight representing several different property owners who currently have property that is zoned RM-16. Their request is to leave the currently zoned property like it is. They've spent a lot of time, a lot of money getting it to this point. Although the projects aren't under, have not started, their request is to leave them out of this amendment. I've checked with Mr. Ives today. You may want to ask him if it would be legal to grandfather in the existing properties. And my belief is that it is. Thank you for all you've done and do for this community.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Clay Beach. I reside at thirty-three ninety-two Shady Lane. I'm involved in a partnership with Chuck Fair, with Beach and Fair Properties, and we own some acres that is zoned RM-16 on Agri Park Drive. We actually just went through that process by hiring SEC, and we were up here, I think, mid, middle of 2015. We feel like, our main concern is we'll lose property value if you, we don't have the by-right option or by-right zoning. And we feel like we should be grandfathered in. I mean, we've gone through the process, and we feel it's wrong to include us in any changes to that zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Chairman Lamb, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, my name is Mark Pertle, and I live at thirty eighteen North Thompson Lane. As most of you know, I've been a commercial developer for thirty-two years now in Rutherford County. The efforts that have been made in the last three to four years to bring approximately two hundred and fifty million dollars in Class A apartments has been most successful. It has added approximately the same value of the new hospital as far as property taxes. But for a person who owns a piece of property to spend tens of thousands and even hundreds of thousands of dollars to secure that zoning and for it to be taken away does not represent the Murfreesboro that I've developed in, does not represent Rutherford County, and certainly doesn't represent, in my opinion, what Tennessee stands for. If you decide to develop a three to three hundred and fifty unit apartment complex, you can be sure it will take you eighteen months to two years to get it before you're ready to break ground and submit a site plan with all the design work, architectural work, engineering work, cost, selecting a construction company. It is unfair for someone to have spent the money to achieve this rating, this zoning, and then it be... This zoning, and then it be arbitrarily removed. I don't believe this is what the city has ever intended, and I think it's very unfair. And I also would like to remind you, and I'm not one of those people, but there are several really fine members of this community that have their property under contract for significant amounts of money with Class A properties coming, but yet haven't gotten them to the final phase of getting the final approval. And for you to go back and remove their zoning, you could cause them to lose their buyers and also the city to lose fifty to sixty million dollars in development. Any of the Class A apartments that have been built, and the only Class A have been built that I'm aware of in the last three or four years, all of them have been fully occupied, ninety-eight percent plus, and are just beautiful with amenities. So I very strongly urge you to grandfather in the zoning that have already been granted. Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. Pertle. Anybody else?
Chairman Lamb and commission, I appreciate you hearing me tonight. But a lot like Mark said, I've made a major investment on some real estate.
Mr. Haley, I shouldn't have to ask you this, but please state your name.
Joe Haley. I'm sorry. Anyway, getting back to continue on what Mark was saying. We've invested millions of dollars in some real estate that was entitled, you know, to build apartments there. And to have that right taken away is just not right. So I would ask you all to consider leaving it the way it is. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anybody else?
Good evening. Brenton Nieders, eighty-six eighty-three Camden Court, Broadview Heights, Ohio. I'm one of those investors, and I came into Murfreesboro two years ago. And it's taken me almost two years to get an approval for Bell Farm, which is on New Salem Highway. It's the ninety-six acres, and it consists of two multifamily locations. So I am now at the point where I'm ready to start building the first luxury apartment complex. And I have millions of dollars invested in this piece of property. And I'm hoping that you do not change the decision from the RM sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. I am Kathy Nobles, and I live at fifteen thirty Riverview Drive. I agree with Ms. Haley, Mr. Pertle, that this would be very unfair to those of us that have spent a lot of time, a lot of energy, and a lot of money to have our property rezoned. We understand that going forward, maybe the city needs to amend the ordinance. But those of us that have invested a lot of money, we feel like would be very unfair if we're included in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nobles. Anybody else?
Chairman Lamb, Commissioner Joe Swanson, eleven eighty-eight Park Avenue. I, too, as a part of my family, have been developing here for many, many years and have invested considerable effort and time, money, into zoning that we have. I wonder, and I question, is the real issue here... Because we do have some very high-quality multifamily developments in this community of recent. Not that we don't have quality developments that were put in place fifteen, twenty years ago, but with the process that we go through and the rules that we abide by now... You know, I can remember in the early, early eighties, when I went with my dad to get permits, and we would basically draw out on a piece of paper what we wanted, and Bill would give us a permit, and we'd call Jameson for an inspection. And we'd build what we wanted to build, basically. But things have changed and times have changed, and things have gotten better, I think. I question if maybe there's not something else that is the issue here with the multifamily. I had some student housing for a short period. And I just wonder if some of this is not stemming from some of the issues that are associated with some of the student housing. And maybe the planning department could look at some of those issues and kind of quarantine, if I can put it that way, some restrictions or some guidelines for the student housing. I don't know that that's where the issue is. I just know with the people that I talk to and communicate with from time to time that those are where some of the more significant issues come from. I agree with everything that everyone has said here tonight. I would like to keep the zoning that we have entitlement to now as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Anybody else? Nobody?
Matt Taylor from SEC. Would like to get some clarification. We've heard several discussions on the apartments, how the townhomes would be affected in this inside of RM sixteen or any of the other multifamily zones, MU or RM twelve as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anyone else? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Well, this has been like a who's who of developers in Murfreesboro. I appreciate all of you folks coming out tonight and participating in this discussion. Let me ask the staff to answer Mr. Taylor's question. I think he's about the only one that had a question.
Chairman Lamb and Mr. Anthony, or myself can take this. Mr. Taylor contacted us with that question earlier. And as Mr. Anthony and Mr. Ives and I researched what the existing ordinance says, how it defines townhomes, it's real... The definitions are kind of a little bit murky. It could be... Townhomes could actually fall into the multifamily category or it could fall into the single-family attached category based upon how both of those two terms are defined in the zoning ordinance. So I think that what we would ask for guidance from the Planning Commission on is, does the Planning Commission... If this is to move forward, does the Planning Commission wish to include townhomes in the planned development-only approach or exclude townhomes from the planned development-only approach? Depending on the guidance that you give us, we may have to tweak the proposed ordinance amendment, modify the definitions of multifamily and single-family attached to make clear what townhomes are considered to be a part of, whether multifamily or single-family attached. But I guess we would ask for direction from the Planning Commission on whether or not Planning Commission wishes for townhomes to be planned development-only, just like the multifamily apartment uses.
Okay. I know ten, twelve years ago, as in Mr. Ives, we had a lot of... While things were really going well, we had a lot of desire by the Planning Commission and particularly the city council at that time. And I don't believe either two of you gentlemen were on the council at that time, to basically make everything planned developments. And that seemed to work well for a little while till the recession came along. And then after the recession came along, all of a sudden, nothing was being built. And the projects that were approved as planned developments, not just ones like we're talking about now, but commercial developments, had to come back before this body to change the development, go to a lot of expense and top a lot of assets to get something approved that would perhaps work in that area. And some of them never have been built. But I would caution both the Planning Commission and the city council both as far as being too overzealous with requiring planned developments everywhere. Sometimes it's the best thing, sometimes it's not. Let me open it up for discussion among the Planning Commission members.
Mr. Chairman?
Ma'am?
I would just like to say from the beginning, I'm sure we'll have a lot of discussion about this, but... I really am not in favor of what we're talking about. I most definitely would like to see at least a grandfathered-in clause for the properties that are currently zoned like that. I just don't see how we can go back and undo what we have done. And I do not think it's at all fair to try to do that. I don't know... You know, I would propose that there be some type of... You know, if it's five years or seven years or ten years. I don't know what the right number of years is, that they would remain or be grandfathered in at the current zone. And then if, you know, five years from now or ten years from now, whatever that is, they still haven't done anything with their property, then it could fall under the new regulations. But I don't agree with going back and trying to undo the current zoning that people have on their property. That's my thoughts.
Well put. Anybody else?
I mean, I would agree with Kathy also. I think that the intent of the planned development, I can, to a degree, agree with. I'm hoping, going back to Mr. Swanson's comment, that we, as part of the planned development process, that we get to the root of the reason why we are going this direction. And if that process is through planned development, I'm fine with it. But as part of a compromise in all fairness, I would agree with Kathy's comment that we grandfather it in. And if we have to put some sort of timeframe as part of that grandfathering in, I think I could agree with that.
My opinion is that I find it challenging, from our standpoint, to set up zoning one way and then in midstream, change the zoning on it. I don't know what legal challenges we would put ourselves in, but I think it's definitely not the right thing to do. Now, as it concerns going forward, if we need to run it through a planned development, then I think that's... It could be potentially the right thing to do, to control what we want to control. But for the existing guys that have already got the zoning, I think we really should consider that.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Ladies or gentlemen?
I know we're going to probably hear from our councilman over here in a minute, but, you know, I definitely think we already have a lot of these potentially RM sixteen and RM twelve projects that come to us as planned developments when the developer sees the need for... Either they need more density and therefore they want to have more amenities. And, you know, we already see it come to us as planned developments many times when, you know, that's what it needs to be or what they want it to be. I kind of liked the way it was working. You know, it was fine with me like it was.
Did you have anything?
I agree with what's been said to date. It just doesn't seem like a fair approach. And I think there needs to be a lot more discussion than trying to make that decision right here and now. There's a lot more to consider. And again, with what Ken said about Joe finding the root cause, I'm a firm believer in digging deep for that root cause. So I think there's a lot more behind the scenes there.
Thank you. Ladies or two councilmen, gentlemen, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I think Kathy's own point. I've said all along that I thought it was fine from the beginning. I said this at city council when I made the motion to defer, take it off the table. And I'm still on that same level as to leave it as it is, as it exists. One of the things I'd like to ask, has staff done any research of how many properties that would come back before us to be rezoned?
No.
Well, you know, if we hadn't done those basic things to understand how many properties would have to come back before us, you know, why are we really talking about this? Because that's really a key. Even though I'm not for it, but you've got to understand what's going to be coming back before you. And then moving forward, as we're a city that's progressing and we're growing, does staff really have time to really be doing this? So those are my comments.
Okay. Well put, Kurt. Mr. Smotherman?
I guess I'll put it in its simplest terms. This isn't a good idea. The... Once you've committed to somebody... I'm not just going to debate the legality of it or even the fairness of it. But once you've committed to somebody that, you know, if you come to our community, you invest in this and you play by the rules that we've got currently set up, those should be the rules. And I just want us to make sure that we do find the root cause of the request for this ordinance, because I do think that Mr. Swanson is probably somewhat right in the sense that we... I think MTSU and student housing is a factor in it. I do think that... And those are legitimate concerns that do need to be addressed. The... This doesn't fix that problem. It... We... Not to prolong this meeting or drag it out any longer than what it's going to be. I just don't think this ordinance is... This is the right time for this ordinance. And if it were to be even considered, I think that a grandfather plan should have to be in the ordinance to allow for those who have already currently made that investment to not face a hardship because of that decision.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. I see no support whatsoever for this proposed ordinance on the Planning Commission, Mr. Ives.
I'm sorry.
I see no support whatsoever for this proposed ordinance on the Planning Commission at this time. Now, what kind of motion would you like us to make to reflect our sentiment?
Well, I guess as a... Maybe a partial step, there has been some discussion that of whether we would... Whether you, as a commission, would favor planned developments for future zonings for multifamily or not. I mean, there's... It is possible... I mean, we can write this ordinance so that currently zoned... Anything currently zoned or zoned RM twelve or RM sixteen prior to a certain date, and let's assume tonight, that's currently zoned to that, has the entitlement that they have under the ordinance as it exists today. Beginning tomorrow, if you have attractive land and you... It's not zoned, RM twelve or sixteen, and you want to build apartments on it, you will need to do a planned development. It can be written that way, if that is Planning Commission's recommendation. It's also, I think, Planning Commission's within your purview to say, "We don't want to do any of this. We want to leave it the way it is." That makes my job easier. I don't have to rewrite something. But I'm happy to do whatever Planning Commission... However Planning Commission would like us to take the next step.
Well, personally, I would rather lean the way you talked about is just don't change it. Don't make any of the change at this time. Like, I think it was Kathy or maybe Ken one said, "You know, I liked it the way it was. I thought we did a good job on it."
And as you pointed out earlier, Bob, you know, the economy is a driver in what I think our expectations of developments are. I mean, there's no doubt that when construction is going well and everybody's doing well in it, that, you know, we can ask for more and expect more from those developers. And of course, on an individual basis, you know, we have the opportunity to pick up the phone and call them and say, "Hey, I just don't think this is up to standard." I think with the developers that we've had come forward tonight, I think they've always built to a high standard. And they're... The ones who were present here tonight are not the problem. We absolutely need to make sure that we monitor whether it's just zoned multifamily or whether it's a change in the restriction with the planned development. But I just don't... I don't see that... You know, there are certain cases where planned development is advantageous to the developer. And so I think it's their call to make, but it's... But the economy is so much of a driver in it that the best idea tonight may be the worst idea six months from now. And that's the reason I would...
And, and that's the reason I would say, if the system we currently have is working, why would you change it? And so I, I would, I would prefer us just leave it like it is.
Okay.
Mr. Lamb, can I, can I?
Yes, sir, Mr. Trell.
Just one very quick thing.
Sure.
I do want to point out just a couple of things, just for, for your knowledge. When the cap was removed during the second reading by the City Council, the moratorium was extended, so the, the moratorium is still in place on rezonings for multifamily, and I do want to point that out, and also want to point out that there's not a cap as, as of right now. The, the back and forth over the, the maximum number is not there. And, Mr. Wade, I want to correct myself. You asked if any studies had been conducted, and I said no, and I failed to remember that way back in February or March, we did put it, put out a study that we provided to Planning Commission and City Council at that time, showing properties that were zoned for multifamily but were not constructed. So, so we do, we can provide those numbers again if necessary.
Okay. Now, this proposal here has nothing to do with the moratorium, though. I don't want that to be confusing.
It, it does not, other than I suspect the moratorium will, will continue on while this discussion continues back and forth between the Planning Commission and City Council.
But that would be up to the council.
And there may need to be discussion about that at council when the, normally a moratorium is put in place for a specific period of time.
I think the last was 90 days.
And I, I think the first one was six months, but my recollection is that when the discussion was to extend the moratorium and remove the cap, that there was not any time discussed for the moratorium. And I think the assumption was, we're going to send it, we, council, send this back to Planning Commission, we'll look at your recommendation and go forward, and the, the moratorium will take care of itself because we'll have a new, a new plan in place. So that may need to be addressed at council again.
Okay. Will this, will this proposal go on to the City Council if we have a negative recommendation tonight, or will it end right here?
Well, council has the power to take this up and consider it and pass it. I not, I think that it would be planning staff's responsibility to advise council what has happened, and council will then elect to take it up or not. And I also would mention if, we do have the issue of putting the introduction to our end notes back into the ordinance. We had an introduction that said, an X means this, O means this, nothing means this, and in the process of changing from footnotes, section in the ordinance to end notes, that introductory section got dropped out, and it needs to be there. And it would also be good to delete, I think there's a few stray references to RM 22 that are still in there, although we eliminated that zoning category. Those two things, it would be good to go forward with this. So I would, I guess I would ask or ask you to consider stripping out the portions regarding planned developments and multifamily, and, and moving forward with the reintroduction of the, or the replacement of the introduction in the reference to RM 22.
Thank you, Ms. Ives.
If I could just.
Go ahead.
I just think this item G should just be, we just, if you want to bring parts of that back, that it comes back the next time. This, this was so confusing. I didn't even know if we were voting on the multifamily stuff tonight, reading this item G. So I don't, you know, unless I'm going to pull out chart one and chart two and know what the minimum lot requirements and minimum yard requirements and use intensity ratios and all that stuff is. Anyway, I'd just like to see if we have some other stuff we need to bring back and vote on separately to get the end notes back in and everything. I think we ought to do that.
If, if that is your direction, that is what we will do.
In, you know, that we can tell what we're voting on.
Did a lawyer write this? Never mind.
Not the agenda.
I think, I think a planner did.
I wasn't going to go there.
Sorry, sorry, Matthew. He knows I was so confused. I had to call. I'm like, what is, what are we voting on here?
It's, it, just, in our defense, sometimes it is difficult when we have a smorgasbord of ordinance amendments to kind of summarize that in the heading, but, but we, we will attempt to.
Should have separate ones for, you know, if we need to get the end notes in there, that's an important.
Kathy, don't, don't fill along there. We all were in the same, we all had to ask our questions, so don't worry. We all, the way it was written.
We'll be happy in the future to try to make the headings more clear as to, as to the summary of them.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I believe we've expressed our intent. Oh, Mr. Russell.
Just, just one thing for me would be, it looks like we're trying to solve a problem through an ordinance, that we don't have a definite definition that this is really going to solve the problem. So if we define what the problem really is, and then we can actually define whether or not we're going to solve that problem and then vote on it, it would be much better for me if I understood what the problem is before I voted on what the solution is. I think I know what the problem is, but from you guys, I need to see data that the solution that you're recommending is going to solve it.
I think that's well put, Mr. Russell. Okay. Who wants to structure a?
I'll make a motion that the current proposed amendments be declined as proposed.
I'll second.
Do you want anything in there about RS 22 or RM 22 or anything?
I, I understand the concern, and if it's rejected as is, we will take the liberty of bringing back to you by itself the introductions to the headnotes and to the, and the RM 22. I, I don't think that planning department will fall apart if we don't get that done for another couple, for another month.
Yeah, that's the desire and intentions of the motion, and I think the council absolutely needs to have more conversation on the moratorium as well, so until that takes place.
Well, well stated, Mr. Smotherman. Thank you. The motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion unanimously carries. We have one more public hearing this evening. The last one is a mandatory referral right-of-way abandonment to consider the abandonment of the right-of-way at White Poplar Court and of the drainage easement along White Poplar Court. Richard Reeves is the applicant. Mr. Anthony.
Thank you, sir. The City Council recently approved a rezoning request for the Tulip Poplar PRD on a 7.2-acre property located along White Poplar Court east of Pitts Lane. Tulip Poplar will include 32 single-family homes, which would be recorded on a single lot, on, as a horizontal property regime. White Poplar Court, which is currently a city street, would serve the Tulip Poplar development. This street does not serve any other development or connect to any other properties. Most notably, White Poplar Court is unique in that it is a city street that was constructed using permeable pavers, which are designed to aid in stormwater control. The applicant has asked that the city abandon the White Poplar Court right-of-way, as well as a 20-foot drainage easement on the east side of the property. If the requested right-of-way abandonment is approved, White Poplar Court would become the responsibility of the developer and subsequently the homeowners association. If the drainage easement abandonment is approved, the 20-foot drainage easement would be relocated to the north, and I believe that a plat that was conditionally approved last month showed the relocation of that drainage easement. I think John Gordon, there he is, he's the only one left. John Gordon from Wiser Consultants has been our point of contact for this project, and he can certainly help if you have any questions. Staff can answer any questions. We ask that you conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the City Council. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
And, and Mr. Ives may correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we probably need a separate motion for the right-of-way abandonment and a separate motion for the drainage easement abandonment. That would be preferable.
Really? Okay. Okay, I'll open the public hearing and, and ask anybody to come forward that's left. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no discussion, we need two motions.
Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the abandonment of the right-of-way.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries. The next motion?
Chairman, make a motion, we approve the abandonment of the drainage easement.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. Since Mr. Whitaker is not here, I presume we don't have any staff reports and other business, but.
I have nothing.
I'll ask the staff. Anything?
No, sir.
Bless you. There's no further business coming before this commission tonight. We stand adjourned.